It's officially 9:30. We'll call the meeting to order and we'll start off with the five. I plead the allegiance of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if the clerk could take the roll, please?
Commissioner Look.
Here.
Commissioner Brassad.
Here.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Here.
Commissioner Severajah.
Here.
Commissioner Gamache.
Here.
Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
The first item is tax claims and abatements. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
There's a second?
Second.
Further discussion. Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Motion carries. Then we have the review of checks issued from Finance and Central Services and from Human Services. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
There's a second?
Second.
Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Then we have the approval of our minutes from the September 11th County Board Meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Oh.
There's a second?
Second.
Any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. We have two items under Chair's remarks today. The first is to learn more about the great things happening within our library system. So I'd like to ask Commissioner Gamache, our library board liaison, to begin our conversation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our libraries are so much more than just books, as I'm sure all of us know. They're hubs of activity all year round, connecting our community to ideas, information, and inspiration. In addition to serving our daily patrons, there are many classes: storytimes, performances, and much, much more. This year, the Anoka County Library is celebrating its 60th anniversary, and one of our branches is undergoing a major expansion right now. There is so much more to talk about, and that's why we've invited Library Director Maggie Snow to tell us more about everything happening and provide the library's annual report. Maggie, welcome.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Commissioners, I'm Maggie Snow, the Director of the Anoka County Library. Anoka County Library began serving citizens in 1958, though the origins of library service in the county go back much further. The earliest mention of library services was in 1859 when the city of Anoka, when a group of citizens solicited books and funds for a lending library. Through donated and purchased books, they amassed a collection of several hundred volumes. It wasn't until 1892, at the urging of the city newspaper and the Philolectians Society, that the city council in Anoka voted to support a tax levy and appoint a library board. The Anoka Public Library was officially opened in 1894 in two rented rooms staffed with a professional librarian. Circulation that first year was 14,808 volumes. As the demand for library services grew, the Philolectians again came through with books, periodicals, furniture, and paintings. But the movement to start a countywide library system first gained real traction through the Library Services Act of 1955, when federal funds were made available for rural library services. Anoka County was the first county in Minnesota to receive those funds. The Anoka County Library was established in 1957 by action of the County Board of Commissioners to levy a one-mill library tax which yielded $18,000 in operating funds. The library was to serve a population of 20,008 people outside the cities of Anoka and Columbia Heights. In November of 1958, 60 years ago, the first Anoka County Library was opened in rented space in Spring Lake Park. A bookmobile was borrowed from State Library Services along with a collection of 10,000 volumes, and the library immediately began expanding to meet the demands of a rapidly growing population. So spring forward 59 years, we are now a staff of 115 people with a budget of over $8 million and a circulation of over $2.5 million. We serve over 340,000 residents in Anoka County and researchers as far away as Australia, and the Philolectians are still supporting us. 25 years ago this year, CERN, the European Organization for Nuclear Research, announced that it was putting a piece of software developed by one of its researchers into the public domain. That software was a global computer networked information system called the World Wide Web, and CERN's decision meant that anyone, anywhere, could run a website and do anything with it. So how times have changed since 1958 and how libraries have changed because of the World Wide Web and the Internet. And yet, we remain true to our mission, the dissemination of stories and ideas to the community. If you read the library's annual reports from 1958 forward, they highlight classes and events for children and adults, circulation figures, growth of resources available to the public, and access to coin-operated typewriters. Not all that different from what we report today to our stakeholders, though we've swapped out typewriters for computers and coin-operated copiers. Through all these years, librarians continue to connect community, creating a county where knowledge, creativity, and opportunity thrive. Many of you have heard me quote Bracia Countryman, Minneapolis Public Library Director from 1904. In her first annual report, she wrote, "A public library is the one great civic institution supported by the people which is designed for the instruction and pleasure of all people, young and old without age limits, rich or poor without class limits, educated and uneducated without culture limit, its function being to instruct and to benefit. This will mean many forms of activity which in the past were not connected with the idea of a library. Still in the minds of many, a library is only a place where books are stored or distributed under many objectionable restrictions. But in a larger sense, the library should be a wide awake institution for the dissemination of ideas." So with those words in mind, here's a short list of what we've accomplished this last year. We've promoted personal growth and learning by hosting more than 2,300 classes and events, serving more than 54,000 residents. Programs have included workshops for small business owners, research assistants, book clubs, and storytimes. We've strengthened communities and neighborhoods by responding to the evolving needs of our patrons. This year, as Commissioner Gamache mentioned, we are expanding the Centennial Library. Construction began about, deconstruction began about two weeks ago. This new library will put learning on display, where every seat in the library is the best seat in the library, and our hands-on IQ kitchen will be a place to tinker, create, and cook, where learning will be connected from the library via walking and biking paths to county parks and Worgo Nature Center. We've expanded access to ideas, information, and inspiration by adding collections and resources, including board games, backpacks for exploring county parks. Our Generations team continues to grow our dementia dialogue services and have successfully launched a collection of memory kits, giving families resources and opportunity to share their stories together. In partnership with State Library Services, our library now houses an American Indian resource collection for Minnesotans across the state to access. In partnership with our colleagues from County Health and the Parks Department, we've installed bike racks and bike fix-it stations to encourage active living. We are rolling out, quite literally, demonstration kitchens on wheels, where librarians will teach kids and families math, science, chemistry, and literature through the culinary arts. And we've recently named Michael Cleberdigs as poet laureate to help us celebrate the written and spoken word. On Friday, November 16th, we'll be hosting a birthday party at the Northtown Library, and we will celebrate 60 years of library service with an afternoon open house. We'll have a premiere showing of our new video highlighting library services throughout the county. We'll have an escape room and a story recording booth, and all of you are welcome to attend. Thank you for your support over the last 60 years to help library services thrive, and I look forward to the next 60.
Well, thank you so much, Maggie, and I think we all know that libraries play a very important role in our community, and it's just exciting to learn about the amazing array of opportunities that are available within our library system. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
So moving on to the next item, public safety is one of our core missions here at Anoka County. Today, I'm honored to announce our second item is to accept a very special designation by the National Weather Service for our commitment to severe weather preparedness. As our Chair of Public Safety Committee, I'd like Commissioner Brassad to tell us more and introduce our special guest. Commissioner Brassad.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is very timely, as we're still watching the East Coast dealing with the aftermath of Hurricane Florence. And while we don't have to worry about hurricanes, we do experience extreme weather and water events right here. Here's an amazing statistic: about 98% of all presidentially declared disasters are weather-related, leading to around 500 deaths and $15 billion in damage per year. Being prepared for the worst can help save lives, and today, Anoka County will be the latest location in one of only a handful of counties in Minnesota to become designated as storm-ready by the National Weather Service. Joining us today to tell us more about this designation and what it means is Todd Crowsey from the National Weather Service in Chanhassen. Thank you, Todd, and thanks for joining us today.
Well, good morning. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. It's my privilege to be here and present this award and designation to Anoka County. I'm pleased to be joined by Jim Flanders, representing Emergency Management, the City of Minnetaka. He's Assistant Fire Chief, Assistant Emergency Management Director, has been with us from day one of the Storm Ready program in the state and was the first city to be so designated. And so he's been with us. Storm Ready is an important partnership between the National Weather Service and Emergency Management. So thank you, Jim. Anoka County, as you may well know, has a long history of storms, especially tornadoes: 1939, 1951, 1965, I can rattle them off, 2005, where I live in the city of Fridley, some areas were without power for 10, 11 days, although I wasn't. 2008, 2011, 2017, it just goes on and on. And so it's fitting, I think, that Storm Ready, that Anoka County be designated as Storm Ready. And the brochure that was handed out, it describes a little bit about what Storm Ready is. It's really a way of making sure some best practices that we recommend along with Emergency Management, that we recommend, multiple ways of receiving weather warnings, relaying those weather warnings. It's all well and good for us to issue a warning, but if nobody hears them, if they're not passed along, it does little good. Many ways to monitor weather, having a public preparedness program that's quite impressive, severe weather plan with training, exercises, and more. And as I mentioned, as was mentioned, a handful of counties, Anoka County is just the 14th county in the state to be so designated. It is quite a rigorous program that Terry and Ryan have gone through. And on a personal note, living in Fridley, I've seen the changes in the Emergency Management Program. It's the National Weather Service. We work with a lot of different counties and cities across the state in western Wisconsin, and I'm truly pleased to say that the Emergency Management Program here in Anoka County is alive and well and doing so many very, very good things. And so it's my, it's my privilege to provide a Storm Ready sign as an indicator of the designation that Anoka County is now Storm Ready. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you so much, Todd. You know, it's really important to be proactive for our citizens, and they should feel more confident that Anoka County has really demonstrated that we have the tools needed to help save lives and property, so before, during, and after a severe weather event. So again, thank you so much. We just appreciate the great partnership, and also congratulations to our staff, who I know collectively with all of the agencies throughout Anoka County have worked very hard to get to this point. So congratulations and thank you so much. Commissioner?
I can't help but comment, Madam Chair. If I believe the first line of the brochure, then maybe you Google it and we believe everything. Americans live in the most severe weather-prone country on earth. That's kind of remarkable, actually. I think of all the many different kinds of events that we suffer, people that are impacted by the thousands, but never thought of it that way, but there are our fair share of disasters, but obviously we need to be ready. Thank you for that.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Now, on to committee reports, and we will start with Management Committee Report. Commissioner Brassad.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Management Committee met on September 11th and just came away with a couple information items that are listed there. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll move on to Transportation Committee Report. Commissioner Schulte.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had the opportunity to meet on Monday, September 17th, here in the Government Center, and we came away with a few action items for you. First, in the Highway Division, the committee recommends approval of a resolution authorizing the declaration of access for two parcels along 125th Avenue Northeast in the city of Blaine.
Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer that resolution.
Resolution has been offered by Commissioner Brassad. Further discussion?
Madam Chair, I would just explain that these two parcels were part of a partial taking when we expanded the roadway, and through the eminent domain process, they were awarded these accesses, so we're granting these accesses for future development of the two vacant parcels.
Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the next item.
The committee recommends approval to enter into a joint powers agreement with the City of Columbus for the reconstruction of Lake Drive with a roundabout at the future location of County Road 23 and County Road 54 intersection located approximately 700 feet west of the current County Road 54 intersection.
I will move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion. Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
The committee recommends approval to enter into a joint powers agreement with the City of Columbus for the signalization of Lexington Avenue and Broadway Avenue intersection in the cities of Columbus and Hanley.
I will move approval. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion. Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The rest of my report is informational, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Schulte. Now we'll move on to Finance and Capital Improvements Committee Report. Commissioner Look.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Finance and Capital Improvements Committee met on September 25th and came away with two action items. The first is that the committee recommends the County Board approve contract C-0006542 with Premier Electrical Corporation out of Brooklyn Park for the completion of the Blaine Human Service Center UPS project in an amount not to exceed $200,830. A UPS project is obviously something that's necessary for, in the event of a storm, before the backup generators kick on to protect the data and the memory and those sort of things in the computers that need to have uninterrupted operations, so.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
There's a second? Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Cordiak, second by Commissioner Schulte. Further discussion. Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
Madam Chair, the second item is the Finance and the Capital Improvements Committee recommends the County Board adopt a resolution 2018-F5 providing for the issuance and the sale of general obligation bonds, Series 2018-A. The total amount is $10,585, and it breaks down by two different categories. The first category is we're refunding a bond for $7,470,000, and this will afford us the ability to drop from a higher interest rate to a lower interest rate and saves us approximately half a million dollars in doing so. We're always very excited about those opportunities as they come along. And the second one is, we heard earlier from Maggie Snow on the library project, the Centennial Library project, it's approximately a $6 million renovation. $3,115,000 of this will be used to pay for it with this bond, so approximately 50% of it. The other 50, we're going to do as a cash basis. So while it's still a good interest rate, going cash is always going to be cheaper. So the total amount, again, is $10,585, and we don't know what the current interest rate is till we go out into the market. We're confident that it's still very competitive right now, and our professionals assisting us here will keep us up to date on those interest rates, so.
Okay. Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer it.
Resolution has been offered. Further discussion.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Schulte.
I would just point out that the refunding bond for $7,470 is not extending that loan. That is, it's on the current rate of the loan, not the current rate, but the current term of the loan we'll maintain.
Thank you. Further discussion. Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Madam Chair, the rest is, actually, there are no informational items. That concludes my report.
Right. Thank you, Commissioner Look. Now we'll move on to Human Services Committee Report, and we have just a couple of items. The first is to consider recommending the County Board amend a contract with the State of Minnesota Department of Corrections, increasing the contract ceiling to $210,000 to accurately reflect a two-year contract for services at the Anoka County Juvenile Center through December 31st, 2018. And I will move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion. Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is Resolution 2018-HS16 Economic Assistance Bills, and I will offer that resolution. Further discussion. Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Motion carries. And then just one point that I wanted to make is I know that folks have probably received the public health survey in the mail, and would just remind people to be sure to fill those out and send them in. The more that we get feedback from the public, that helps us determine our plans moving forward, so want to make sure that we get a good response on those surveys. And that concludes my report. Now we'll move on to Information Technology Committee Report. Commissioner Gamache.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The IT Committee met on Monday, September 17th. We have four action items. The first one is recommending that the County Board approve contract C-0006756 with Superior in the amount of $98,480 to upgrade the county's Enterprise Resource Planning System from version 16.2 to version 18.2 or 18.3. I believe there was a debate as to which one we were going to get, but the IT Director requested that we also have an authorization of $16,520. That's a change order for any additional services that may be required that are directly related to the upgrade, so the total is not to exceed $115,000. The IT Director is here. Susan, do you have anything additionally you wanted to add to this one?
Certainly, Mr. Chair, members of the County Board. I'm Susan Vreeland, the IT Director for the county. We implemented the One Solution product back in January of 2014, and we use that product countywide for financial information, accounting information, some of our employee information, so it's a pretty important product, pretty powerful product for the county. We're now in the place that we need to upgrade to a higher version due to some better functionality in a newer product. In addition, I have some security requirements related to the hardware that I need to address before the end of next year. So we knew this was coming. We've been planning for it. We've been working with our partners in finance and other areas to get ready for it, and now is the time to start that process. It's going to be a good year to get it done, so we're looking forward to starting now.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it, Pam.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion. Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
The committee recommends to the County Board ratification of PH Doc Support and Maintenance Agreement between Conduent State and Local Solutions, Inc., and the Minnesota County Computer Cooperative. This is to maintain our partnership. We need to maintain our partnership with Min CCC. Occasional review and approval of administrative documents is required, and this is basically what we're doing in this regard.
That is correct, Madam Chair, members of the board. We've been with MCCC since 2000. Several of the commissioners in front of me today have heard some of those wins in the past. We first started with our CSTS, our Courts Tracking System, through MCCC. We've also implemented JAMES, that's the juvenile system that Corrections uses extensively. And in 2013, we implemented PH Docs, which is the public health record system. So that cooperative has been a real win for the county. I'm hoping there's more opportunities there in the future. As a part of our current agreement, though, PH Docs, that product is used by a number of counties, and there's an external vendor that developed it and maintained it. So MCCC went through the process of renewing that maintenance agreement to continue support. Counties are expected to, their board ratify that agreement so that we're signing off on what they've renewed. So this is a process we go through every couple of years. Cindy Caesar does have the funding in her budget for this, so this is an anticipated expense. It's simply a renewal of those documents.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
Further discussion. Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
Next item, the IT Committee recommends that the County Board approve Master Contract C-0006627 with all furniture commercial services in St. Anthony, or excuse me, Minneapolis, Minnesota, for services related to moving staff PCs, laptop, and laptops related to staff relocations or any remodels. The reason why we do this is to have a master contract for these services will assure that it's done in a timely manner, and the delivery of the quotes and the service delays can, that we won't see those types of things if we have this contract already in place. So that's the reason why we're moving forward with this one. I'll move it.
There's a second?
Second.
Further discussion. Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
The next one is another master contract. This one is C-0006623 with Hardware Technology Company in Minneapolis as well, services related to moving staff PCs, same type of thing as one in the last one. Again, it's great to have a master contract, makes things a bit simpler, a little easier, and I think in the long run saves us money.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
Further discussion. Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And the last item was just informational items, so that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Gamache. Now we will move on to Internal Audit Committee Report. Commissioner Look.
Madam Chair, thank you. The Internal Audit Committee met on September 20th, and we have Commissioner Severajah, myself, and there are two citizen members that meet, are members of this committee as well, which is Bob Thistle and Brian Page. And I'd just like to thank both of them for coming and participating on a regular basis in this committee and contributing positively. So we don't have any action items on this, but we do have informational items that I'd like to bring up to people's attention here. The first is that the committee approved a summary report of the Fleet Services Audit. And when I say audit, this is an internal audit that's done by an internal auditor, and it's not a, it's not a, we think you're doing something wrong audit. It's a, we want to make sure that nothing's being done wrong, because when the state auditor comes through and does an audit, if they catch something that's being done wrong, then we got problems. So basically, we want to make sure that everything is done the way it should be done. So basically, we want to make sure that everything is done the way it should be done and we want to be able to validate that. And this gives us some time to do that and these are excellent audits that occur. I know people get nervous during these audits and they, they probably shouldn't because this is really our people working with our people and it's a, it's a good thing. For the Fleet Services Audit, there was some concentration of duties that were looked at and considered to be possibly an area where a state auditor might comment on. So we're looking at tightening up that so that there's multiple eyes looking at things and making sure that everything is done appropriately there. There was a limited audit of payroll as well, which, where you go through all the, all the people receiving payroll and making sure there's no increases that shouldn't have happened and making sure everything is correct and all that checked out as well. So we're happy for that, happy for the good reports on the audits that were done and we'll continue kind of selecting audits throughout the county. And we just appreciate everyone's cooperation and willingness to work with our auditor and then ultimately coming for the audit committee. So that concludes my report.
Thank you Commissioner. Certainly just a good proactive way to look at processes to make sure that they are really where they need to be. So appreciate that report. Now we will move on to Public Safety Committee report. Commissioner Brassad.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Public Safety Committee meeting was held on September 18th. We've got a few action items. The first being that the committee recommends approval and execution of a memorandum of understanding for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program Year 2018 Local Solicitation Between the City of Coon Rapids and Anoka County in the amount of $12,163. This is just a grant that's going through the county to the city of Coon Rapids.
I'll move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item?
The committee recommends acceptance and execution of the 2018 DNA Capacity Enhancement and Backlog Reduction Program Grant between the Office of Justice Programs and Anoka County with a total obligation to the Department of Justice not to exceed $150,000 with an effective date of January 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2020.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
I would just comment that during the committee meeting, we did discuss with the sheriff the idea that this is a position that's being brought on, essentially another lab technician with DNA capabilities, in that depending on how successful that is, we'll need to figure out if we can be grant funded in years beyond these two, or whether this is in addition to the payroll and something we need to consider carefully. Obviously, we felt it was important. The backlog of DNA is a problem and the quicker we can get to these crimes, the quicker we can solve them, the quicker we can get the bad guys off the streets. But at the same time, we need to watch the personnel budgets fairly closely, so we asked him to, you know, carefully monitor those grant opportunities to make sure that we don't lose this one, that we can get this grant going on beyond these two years.
Further discussion.
Madam Chair, just a quick question. Did we have any discussion at the, from the sheriff's office about, I know that the backlog happened and it's happened throughout the state, but I was wondering if with having this money coming in, this grant money coming in to update things, if we got updated and we no longer had the background, or no longer had the backlog, would we be able to stay up to date on a, on a day-to-day basis with what's going on in the, in the system? Just kind of curious if they have any idea if that's working.
And they see Derek Schulte Hallweg coming forward to answer the question.
Figured he was here.
Make use of me. Good morning, Madam Chair and Board, and certainly that's our hope is to, this is a renewal of a grant that's already in place and that we've had a scientist on board with. As you said, this is a statewide issue with, with the backlog and it's not necessarily cases that, it's the whodunnits. These are cases where there's really not a lot of question of, did this incident occur and who was involved? It's whether or not other elements of the crime have been met. But there's been a change in the belief that these cases still need to be tested and again, that's kind of on a statewide basis. So our belief is that we can, you know, there's plans to get caught up. You know, this grant is a renewal and as Commissioner Schulte stated, if the grant doesn't renew at some point, it's a decision the, you know, the tri-county advisory board will have to look at this as to whether it's to bring it in or look at where we're at at the time and if we're caught up, is it a position that's still needed at that point?
Thank you. Yeah, I think that's a good point because it wasn't that we were just sitting on these things, not doing anything with them, it was just that that was not the belief that some of these needed to actually be tested.
Yeah, it wasn't, these cases weren't, did something occur and who was involved? It was more, you know, what were the other circumstances to, is it actually a crime versus some, you know?
The philosophies have changed.
Yes.
Commissioner.
Madam Chair, I'll just touch on one point that Chief Deputy Hallweg made, that it's the tri-county lab that's actually hiring these people. So it's not a full cost borne by Anoka County should the grant go away. We would be apportioned based on the formula, so a little bit more than a third probably of what the cost would be. So it's not a full Anoka County cost. At this point, it's not an Anoka County cost because it is a grant, but in the future perhaps.
Right, thank you. Roll call vote?
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
Recommendation for approval and execution of the 2019 law enforcement contracts for a term of January 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2019 with the follow municipalities. So all the renewals, we have seven cities, one township. The cities are Andover, Bethel, Columbus, East Bethel, Ham Lake, now then Oak Grove, and our township of Linwood. Each contract is pretty similar to what has been in the past, not many changes. All the details and dollar amounts are listed here online if you want to get into that much detail, but I will move that.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion. Commissioner Look.
Madam Chair, I have always kind of looked at these and kind of wondered to myself why we're getting into this. And I used to serve on the Ramsey City Council. Ramsey has their own police force and they're also insured by the League of Women, uh, League, League of Minnesota Cities, sorry. League of Women Boaters is on the mic. League of Minnesota Cities has a trust fund that is set up to handle any and all insurance requirements that the cities have with regards to issues that may come up with police conduct, for example. The county is a self-insured county, which means when we engage in contracts such as these with cities and there is a lawsuit that comes as a result of law enforcement, we're on the hook. When I say we are on the hook, I mean every single citizen in this county is on the hook. Let's say, for example, and you hear of it on a regular basis where there's scuffles, you know, people generally don't like being arrested and they want to fight or whatever the case is. And then there's a claim of, you know, police brutality or something of that nature, which seems to be a common theme out there today unfortunately. And whether it's true or whether it's not true, we still get sued for it. And if there is a judgment or a payout or a settlement or something of that nature, that falls on this county, on these people. And I'm not saying that cities shouldn't have police forces, they should. It's, you know, a necessity. I'm just not sure that it's the right fit for a county that's self-insured to be put at risk by approving these type of contracts. And this is, this is something I've questioned since I think my tenure here on this county, at this county seat. So I will continue to question this and I will oppose this motion this morning.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
If I might just comment, certainly these particular municipalities we're under contract with, the sheriff represents them in the public safety room, but it's, the cities not listed here that we're more subject to a problem with. For instance, Ramsey, Coon Rapids, cities that have their own police departments where we have mutual aid agreements. I think that's more where you're concerned and I don't think the contracted cities are really the concern. I think it's the mutual aid agreements with other cities that we should visit and we should talk about where the culpability lies. And I'm not sure, I mean, these contracted cities have, you know, it's our sheriff working in those cities and there is no police department to interact with. So there is no real mutual aid agreement with these municipalities. So I'm not so sure, I mean, I think supporting these contracts is the right thing to do and when we start discussing mutual aid agreements, we figure out a better step there. Because I think that's where more of our difficulties lie. Now, the sheriff was very careful to point out to me that the exposure to the cities and the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust is much higher than it is to the county only because we're called to a lot more mutual aid agreements in those cities where they're responsible for it as opposed to when we call those cities out to help us. So the exposure rate is much higher for them. However, I get your point, that their exposure rate is a multimillion dollar League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust compared to a self-insured county. Fully understand your concern there and I think it's something we should deal with at that time when we deal with the mutual aid agreements and not so much when we deal with the contracts.
Chair, can I respond?
Mm-hmm.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Schulte, mutual aid is a separate issue that I'd like to discuss at some point because that is another liability. But we've had settlements at this county with sheriff going into contracted communities and a lawsuit coming out of it and we're paying out. It's happened in the past, it's going to happen in the future. And it's not that I don't trust our legal, because I know they do the best job they can, but I don't trust the juries necessarily. And some of the awards that come out of some of these juries will blow your mind. I mean, look at the McDonald's coffee scenario. I mean, it's, it's just something that we have to try and limit. And I don't know that, that we're serving ourselves well and putting ourselves at risk when we are self-insured.
Madam Chair, for my edification, and perhaps the chief deputy knows this, but aren't we mandated by Minnesota law to protect all the county, all the cities in the county that don't have a police department? I thought we were, Minnesota law required us.
My understanding, and I could be totally wrong, is in townships, we are legally required. And I will just note that Linwood has consistently gone above and beyond and chosen to expand the services and actually have a contract.
That's true, that's true, Madam Chair. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yep, go ahead.
But the townships don't have to have a contract. We are required by state statute, the sheriff, to, to service the first response there. And, you know, this, since I came here 20 years, over 20 years ago, Linwood has chosen to have that contract to go above and beyond what is required of a township. Back, Burns Township was similar before they came now then, but they did not have a contract. We just serviced them as a township without a contract. And once, once you become a municipality as Burns became now then, then they're required to take on the responsibility. And that's where all these contracts come into place with those cities that choose to contract with the sheriff's office versus, you know, the expense of starting up their own police departments.
And I would just comment on that particular, if you look, the majority of these communities are very small communities. It would not be cost-effective, nor would it make any sense whatsoever for each of them to start their own police departments and build in a whole infrastructure in order to meet the needs of those communities. I think that you would see property taxes within each of those communities go through the roof if they all had to have their own police department. And so a lot of communities, especially smaller communities and larger communities, frankly, in the case of the city of Andover, see it as a very fiscally responsible move to contract with our sheriff's department. So, you know, I, I know that across the globe, there are very different structures and, you know, I'm very supportive when communities choose to really look at the fiscally prudent thing for their citizens because creating even more, I don't think necessarily makes sense to have that many police departments scattered throughout in all these communities throughout the county. Commissioner Brassad and then Commissioner Cordiak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I too came from city council, city council of Ham Lake, and we did about a two-year study when I was on the city council of what it would look like for our city to have its own police department. And it was very clear that the service that is being provided by the Anoka County Sheriff's Office was a great deal as opposed to starting up their own police department. In talk, as chair of public safety, when I talk to these cities, they're very happy with the service that they get. They appreciate the partnership. Each city has a liaison that regularly attends the city council meetings, gives updates, and the sheriff's office works with each one of these individually to address the needs that are unique to their cities. So I'm grateful that it's being provided.
Mr. Cordiak.
I'll just comment, Chair, that it has been proven again and again, I believe, as cities look at this, that we're cost-effective. And I think that's an effective answer to this question. Second, Chair, I think we have some statutory obligation to serve the countywide needs of law enforcement, at least for townships and other jurisdictions. Many counties do, they serve the entire county. We don't, no, no obligation.
Townships specifically.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'll just weigh in since everyone else. As a, as a former mayor of the city of Andover, which is the largest city under contract with the sheriff's department, we did always find that it was a great working relationship that we had with the sheriff. We always received the services that we needed. And I, and I can kind of understand where Commissioner Look is coming from because Andover and Ramsey are common, almost mirror images of each other. So we did do it for our cost savings. There's no doubt about it. That just the, the amount that it would cost now for a city of over 30,000 people to put a police department together would be astronomical for that city. And the way the sheriff's department has done it has been great. They, a number of years ago, added to the cars that they are Andover patrols. We, we purchased a number of years ago more services for investigators in the city of Andover, so we paid for more to have those guys there. We have 80 hours per day of patrol services and it has worked out very, very well for us. But it is a cost savings to the cities and in that regard. I guess maybe I wouldn't mind looking at something to see if there's a way to eliminate some of the risk on the county. But I trust the training and the quality of the individuals that serve our sheriff's department, but I understand your point from that other aspect, although McDonald's probably knew about the fact that their coffee was too hot. So, thank you.
All right. Further discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Opposed.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And that concludes my report.
All right, Commissioner, thank you very much. Now we will move on to the next item, which is to consider approving a contract with which is to consider approving a contract with the dental insurance renewal with health partners for 30-hour or more per week benefit-eligible positions of non-union and union employees, as recommended by myself, the responsible commissioner for insurance, for a five-year period, starting on January 1st, 2019, through December 31st, 2023. And the RFP was actually, we went out for RFP, it was actually very competitive and actually resulted in a 4.2% overall rate decrease, which is always good to hear. Obviously, you know, we've seen significant increases on the health insurance side, so it's really nice to come in with a decrease here. So, and there will be no changes in benefits from the current plan offered. In the out-years 2022 and 2023, the rate caps are guaranteed not to exceed 3%. And for the years 2020 and 2021, the rate is guaranteed at what's being proposed. So again, very pleased with the result of this and want to thank Bill Keller for his work on this. He works tirelessly in taking a look at these things. So again, want to thank you so much for your assistance with this. I will move approval, is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion.
Madam Chair, I just have a quick question. It says in here that it's for benefit-eligible positions of non-union and union employees. Do we have any employees that are not in those categories? Does that just mean every employee?
It's, I believe it's a way to basically define all of our employees.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
It's the legal terms. Jerry.
Madam Chair, county commissioners are considered employees under this definition.
Is that the question?
All right. So, further discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is to consider Resolution 2018-1 to 2, a resolution adopting a proposed property tax levy program for the year 2019. And I will offer that resolution. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Look.
Okay, round two here. I have spent some significant time going over this levy increase that is proposed. And I've tried to, you know, for folks at home watching, we, the way we kind of set things up here is we establish a budget. Let's call that Budget of Pie. And some of you have probably seen this video that was put together, and I think we received awards on, very nice video, that basically breaks out commercial, industrial, residential, everyone gets a slice of the pie. And based on state formula, you pay a portion of that pie. And it's not necessarily looked at in terms of economic growth. Okay? We just kind of establish what our needs are going to be, hopefully, and we divide it up. And I did some, and thanks to our finance crew who struggled with me in getting this information put together, I wanted to basically, recently we hired a economic development person, because economic development is important. And I wanted to break down, just for 18, what we were looking at in terms of economic development. How many new residential, how many new commercial, how many new industrial properties came online? And everybody knows that when you look at your property tax statement, there's a litany of things that you pay taxes on, but let's break it down into three, your city, school, and county. And specifically under county, if you draw a cross, you'll see, for your house, for example, you need to pay $800 or $1,000 or $600, or whatever the amount is. So if you were to come in downstairs and pay that bill, you would literally write a check for $600 of that portion of the county. Okay? And I wanted to know how many new properties came online and what those portions would be for each one of those properties, so we could get an understanding of what sort of increased economic development we've seen in 2018. It's going to differ for 2019, hopefully it goes up. Hopefully, the new person we hired is actively appealing to new companies and houses being built. And at the Gulf event, we had kind of cities, you know, give a report on how many homes are going to be built and how many businesses are coming in and that sort of thing. It was a very positive report. I think the majority of communities had 200, 300 home developments coming in, that's great, good news. So for 2018, we're looking at 1.4 million, 1.45 million dollars in increased dollars coming into the county. Now, keep in mind, we don't look at it that way, we look at it in terms of levy. But if you did look at it that way, we'd be capturing another 1.4 million dollars annually. This budget here is going up approximately $10 million. Okay? So 10 million less 1.4 will give you exactly how much of a deficit we're running on this budget. Okay? Which is one of the reasons why I wanted to compare. Not how much it's going to impact every single property, because it's going to impact that property regardless. Once we establish this budget, it's going to impact them regardless. But I wanted to know, how does our economic development offset our increases? And it's not looking real good. Okay? So basically, we have, we looked at it a number of different ways. We looked at budget cuts, and we went through some exercises on what we could do for budget reductions. There are some that had reductions and some that didn't have reductions out there. Okay? So you take the budget cuts, there are additional revenues that we're getting from the state, there are additional fees that we might be charging folks, count all that together, and add the economic development. And that's kind of what we can try and figure in terms of revenue, and then what's going to be our deficit. And we're still needing to raise the levy by 4.94, is that correct? 4.94 is what's proposed. I've heard some discussion about my district can support this. Okay? Well, I want to go on record that my district can't support this. And matter of fact, I've heard from families that this year, just for basketball, for example, for basketball tryouts, they have to pay $25, they have two kids, it's $50. It was a hardship for them to pay 50 bucks additional. And things are still tight out there for families. And this is a reoccurring statement that you hear from me, budget year after budget year, is that people are still having some struggles out there. When I started here approximately eight years ago, we were levying around 96-some million dollars, as I recall. Now we're up to 136 million. That's on average of $5 million. Every single year has gone up since I've been here. Costs go up, I get that. There's costs of healthcare, there's costs of wages, et cetera. And so, really, that reduces the thinking to, what is the core mission of county government? What is our core mission? What should our core mission be? I think you'll get a varying opinion, six here today, but seven different opinions up here, and there's a myriad of other opinions as well. But what is the core mission? And do we need to do some sort of an overhaul by evaluating what our needs and what our wants are? We have a lot of needs, we have a lot of wants. Do we need to take a strong look at what those two are? And can we continue, year after year after year, increasing the way it's been? This, I believe, is the largest increase since my tenure here on the board. And I just want to, just in closing here, just want to name off a couple of increases that you're going to see this year. Okay? Your city's going to have an increase. Your school's going to have an increase, a real big increase, actually. County's looking at an increase, state will have an increase, federal government will have an increase. Your utilities, you'll see an increase in your utilities. Your cost of fuel for your vehicles, you'll see an increase in that. Your healthcare costs go up, your costs of goods and services go up. Okay? And everybody has and makes the argument, it's just a small increase, it's a little one. Okay? And every other person makes that same argument, it's just a little one. And if it was just them, we could probably handle it. But in the end, when you add it all up, every single family is probably looking at $500 to $1,000 more every single year as to the increases they're going to be faced with. And the question is, do they have that discretionary income to pay for that and to cover that increase? Or are they having to make other cuts in their lives and their budgets to try and account for that? And I know a lot of the people in my district are making those cuts, having to make those cuts, and are very displeased when there's increases. So for that reason, Madam Chair, I will oppose property tax levy for 2019.
Okay, is there further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
Well, I would comment that I will support this levy. It seems non-discretionary when our healthcare costs have gone up over 10%. We considered that a victory, getting our healthcare premiums to only go up 10% when we were projected to go up much higher. But that's a direct cost that passes through and has to be borne. The other option is to not offer health insurance to your employees. Of course, the federal law doesn't allow that, we're required to offer health insurance. I think we do it very prudently, I think we spend a great deal of time, we have staff, professional staff hired, to monitor and negotiate those contracts. But again, it's a non-discretionary, we have to do it type of cost. And to give some credit to our department heads, they took this tax levy budget cut seriously. They took this budget exercise very seriously. We all, in committee, sat through many presentations where they presented what they would cut. Many of the things our department heads said they would cut was critical, in my mind. Cutting it wasn't really an option, even though they said they would do it if they had to. You know, as to the budgets going up every year, you know what, our counties keep still growing. It's growing every year, we have to add more plows, we have to add more sheriff's department, we have to add more human services. Every year, as our county grows, we need to add more services. When we're full grown, when we are 100% developed, that I would hope would change. I would hope there would be some stability, some flattening out of that curve. With that said, I think this is a reasonable budget. I don't like it to go up, nobody does. I run a business for a living, I don't like to raise my costs. But to pay your employees and to offer the services you have to offer, sometimes you've got to raise your costs. And I think most residents recognize that, most residents understand that. I concur with Commissioner Look that some of my residents in my district, and by the way, I care about everybody's district here, not just mine. I'm an Anoka County Commissioner, I may represent a specific district, but I look out for all of Anoka County. And I know there's some people hurting, I know there's some people that still are underemployed. But we also know that that market is broadening. There are more and more jobs available, with better and better pay, with better benefits. And so I think they have opportunities here in Anoka County. And I think cutting services or cutting opportunities for those people at the county would not be the right thing. So I will support the levies presented.
Further, Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with Commissioner Schulte that so much of what we do, like healthcare costs or, you know, we're an employer of close to 2,000 people, that's a huge expense. That's out of our control, that came in at, like Mr. Schulte said, 10%. Unfunded mandates that are being passed down to us from the state have a huge impact upon us. Last couple of years, I think it's been close to $5 million that we're mandated to provide services, mostly through our human services division. And we're not getting the funds that are coming from the state to do this. So that is something that we just have to embrace and provide those services as efficiently as possible. But also employees. We're a big employer, and it's important to me to be a good employer. We can't just say we're not giving raises. We will end up seeing more turnover, and training ends up being extremely expensive. We want to have good staff, we need to be competitive in their salaries. It's just like running any other business. To not do so would not be good business sense. And while none of us like to see a big increase, in looking at what other counties are doing, it still looks like we're going to come in on the low end of things. And looking over the increases that we have seen, the average increases over the years, it's like in the last eight years or such, we've seen like a 1.5% increase over the year, over the years. I think we're doing a very good job, we're very responsible in trying to provide all of our services as effectively as that we can.
Further discussion.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
Just to follow up on both Commissioner Brassad and Commissioner Schulte's comments, I am supporting this levy and this budget. I think the staff, I want to thank the staff for the work that they did. Each and every department came with, they had, there was a request from us to see what they could do. And each and every one of them came back with ideas and thoughts, and some were used, some decided that we just couldn't do that, we couldn't see further reduction in library hours and things like that. So we kind of thought, got to the fact that this is where we're at, this is where we're going. We have seen other counties around us increase their budgets over the last four years. This is the fourth year that now that I've been on the county board, and they've all taken increases earlier, and we kind of stayed at exactly what we needed. We never really went above and beyond to say, well, if we did this, maybe we'd have a flatter trajectory and would take a little bit more here in 2015 and 16. And then, now we're here, coming up on the 2019 budget, and now we do need a 4.9% because things are continuing along a line as others. And other counties might see a little bit lower this time, because they took maybe a 5% or 6% or 7% increase two or three years ago. But we had a different philosophy. So I'll back this, I know that there are some issues that have been brought up and very good points made on each one. And it is tough, you're going to see cities increasing some of their property taxes as well. Inflation is real, we need to keep staff, staff to run the county with the expectations that our constituents have about the services that they are receiving. So with that, I'll end, and I'm supportive.
Great. Thank you. Further discussion? Okay, if not, I would just comment, I think that there needs to be some clarification. The county gross levy for 2018 was $147,888,396. The proposed county gross levy for 2019 is $154,354,655. So that difference is actually almost 6.5 million, rather than I think the 10 maybe that was originally mentioned. That actually brings the certified levy then proposal is down to, after taking in county program aid and so forth, brings it down to $136,508,297. I would just comment that for this county board, we have been very careful about the expenditures and recognizing that there was a great recession that people were kind of coming out of, and it was extremely difficult. So when we were able to make significant reductions, that's exactly what we did. In order to send that money back to the taxpayers, so that they would have more money in their pocket. We could have just held on to that money and sat on it, we did not think that was the right thing to do. So if you look at the average increase, you take years 2012 through 2019 and average the increase over that period of time, it's 1.01%. 1.01% is the average annual increase if you take it over the course of those 2012 to 2019. That is taking into account, as was mentioned, the county has increased healthcare costs, the county, just like every family, has increased costs for petroleum, putting in sheriff's vehicles and other county vehicles. We have increased heating costs, we have increased electric costs. We also have all of these other increase in costs in wages, benefits, all of those things in order to keep a good, reliable workforce. If we have a lot of turnover and that workforce is not consistent, that's when we run into more problems with lawsuits and other things, when we don't have staff that are well-trained. A significant portion of the increase also goes back to public safety. We do not have room in our jails, we are boarding more and more. We do not have room in our jails, we are boarding more and more people out of county in other jails, so that's an increased cost to us. We have overtime within 911, within the sheriff's department and so forth, so there are increased costs within public safety as well. You know, I would, would also say that, you know, I am very proud of the work that has been done by our staff in really trying to do whatever they could. They have continued to look for efficiencies time and time again. So although this reflects an increase that I think is probably larger than any of us would like to see, again, if you look over that period of time, really, I think we have done a really nice job. And if you compare, I think if you compared any other county in the state in looking over that period of eight years, I would doubt that you would come anywhere close to that 1.01%. That's in addition to in human services alone, not including any of the other cost shifts. In about the past five years, we have literally absorbed 12 million dollars in cost shifts in that area alone. So I actually think that our staff have done an amazing job, I want to thank the entire budget team and each department for really being thoughtful in the process and coming forward with ideas of ways that you could continue to streamline and save money, and very, very proud of our staff. So with that, Commissioner Cordiak.
You'd just like to give the chair the last word, ma'am. I can't help but comment that you alluded to our many manager, our many departmental managers, which I think in many ways, we asked them to hold to a 0% increase in the budgets, which we have asked them years before, trust me. The fact that they could, would, and can do that speaks to that a lot. We actually then turned around and asked them to seek to make various reductions to their budget additionally. Now, I think many of them did, they were fearful of the wrath of Ms. Hetrick there, and they, but they met the objectives of this county board, as we outlined, what we needed to do budgetarily, recognizing gas, water, electric fees, and everything else goes up that still impacts our budget's bottom line, and I think this board proven to be very fiscally responsible, and I'll just say that I will support this, and I thank the staff for all that they did to help get us here today. Thank you.
All right, and with that, roll call vote.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Subaraja.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Opposed.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
Part of this motion, we should have announced the date and time when the final levy is set.
I have that next. I have that coming up, so I will. I can actually skip ahead to that now, and then we'll go back to the public safety levy. So the county board will hold a public meeting on December 6th at 6 o'clock PM, at which time the budget and levy for 2019 will be considered, and at which time the public will have an opportunity to speak on the proposed 2019 budget. So basically, the way that the statute is set up is we pass this preliminary levy, it cannot go up from this time, they, we would have the ability to have it go down, but it cannot increase from where it's at that was set today. The next item is Resolution 2018-123, a resolution adopting the proposed public safety levy, and.
I would offer the resolution.
Okay, resolution has been offered. Further discussion?
Madam Chair, just for the public certification, the public safety levy is specifically used to pay back the public safety data system that has been implemented throughout the county amongst all the cities and township, and the sheriff's department to, to make sure that we have an up-to-date, not only radio communication system, but a collection, a records management system, and a number of different interfaces that all went into that project, and it's recovered from the taxpayers through the public safety levy.
Right. Thank you. Further discussion? And my understanding is that's flat, there's no changes in that levy at all, it's exactly the same that it was last year. So the resolution's been offered, further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Subaraja.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Motion carries. And then the final item is to consider appointing John French, a law enforcement professional, to the Adult Mental Health Advisory Committee for a term ending September 30th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Schulte. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And just would remind folks that this coming Saturday is Hope Fest, Alexandra House had mentioned that they were having a new name for their fall event, and that will be held out at Bunker Hills, so encourage folks to participate in that as well. With that, meeting is adjourned.